All right, I'll let everybody in now.
Paul, is it Gianna or is it?
Gina.
Gina.
Yeah, Gina is here, our new administrative assistant, just so you know.
You're gonna introduce her to the public, Paul.
Okay, here we go.
In the picture, honey. Sorry, it doesn't matter.
All right, six o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Point Arena City Council Monthly Meeting. It is June twenty eighth, and if I can get a roll call, that would be great.
Yes, Councilmember Wasserman.
Here.
Councilmember Kugel.
Here.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Dropped out, she is here, but her video is dropped out.
I'll check on that. Vice Mayor Berkey.
Here.
Mayor Ignacio.
Here. Okay.
Also present is City Manager Paul Anderson, CPA Joseph Arch, Administrative Assistant Gina Javis, and it looks like Lieutenant Comer has joined as well.
Excellent, excellent. All right, we'll move on to item two. Paul, if you want to take a moment and check on Councilmember Dobbins's stream, that would be great. For this moment, if we could turn it over to Councilmember Wasserman for this evening's reading.
Thank you, Scott. As some of you may know, I'm on the big island of Hawaii. And of course, I won't let, try not to let anyone forget that by reading something that pertains to volcanoes. As we are surrounded by them here on the big island, this is some advice from a volcano. Stay active. Keep your inner fire burning. It's okay to let off steam. Go with the flow. Be uplifting. It's all a matter of time. And finally, have a blast.
Thank you for that, Richie. Okay, folks, you've seen the agenda that we've gotten tonight. If what I'll do now at this point, as we do with every meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. And then before we go to the vote, after the motion has been initiated and seconded, we will have a discussion, and this will go for all our motions tonight. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I move.
Okay, I'll take from Councilmember Kugel, and I'll take the second from Vice Mayor Berkey. Now, is there any discussion or changes or anything you want to amend to the agenda? Not hearing any, I will wait for Paul. Talk kind of slow as he comes back into the off. Look at that, he was there the whole time. All right, Paul, can I get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Wasserman.
Here.
Councilmember Kugel.
Here.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
We're voting on a motion, correct?
Yes, yes, it's a yes.
Yes, in here.
That's.
Other than a nay is a yes.
Mayor Ignacio.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Obviously. Okay, mayor's reports and announcements, the only thing I have, I'd like to appreciate the OES operator Brent, is it Blazer or Blazer?
Oh. I think it's Blazer.
Blazer, Brett Blazer put on a regional OES training this last week, and I attended with the rest, the members of city staff and some other outside members, including Redwood Coast Fire Chief Michael Sutcliffe, who also serves as the city's fire chief, and it was a good program. Just reminding everybody and reminding us how much we need other agencies should there be an emergency that comes up. But it was important, and I think everybody on staff, even though they're not part of an EMS response, our city staff is quite aware that they're to secure themselves and their families and report to work in the event of an emergency to get assigned and help out with whatever needs to happen. The other thing we realized that through that discussion, and at some point, I think Paul's gonna bring it up in a future meeting, if not tonight during his report, is the need for some radio communication or some type of communication from vehicle to vehicle. We've recently, well, not recently, historically, we've always been such a tiny little city that we just drive or we walk across the street and wave and say, hey, this is what I need, this is what's going on. In the event of emergency, we may not have that ability, and being able to have the city staff talk to each other in the event of a storm or an emergency would be vital. So we're gonna be looking at funding that, it will be a long-term investment and hopefully not too expensive. Besides that, I think everybody sees, there he is, Lieutenant Comer's here tonight from Mendocino County Sheriff's Office. Good evening, JD, how are you doing?
Good evening, it's been a little bit of a busy day here, so I'm just pulled over to join in while I got a, found some good cell service. Yeah, just to comment on the communication thing, how important that is. You know, just recently, we had the fiber optic cable cut up here, which took out, you know, landlines, it took out cell service, and it's a big eye-opener as far as how, how much we depend and rely on those sources of communication. So, you know, radio for us was the only thing we had, but for the public, they had nothing. We were able to come up with a little bit of something as far as reporting emergencies go, but being on the coast, that's definitely something that could happen consistently because it's happened twice this year. And I know Mountain View AT&T is working on Mountain View at some point this last month, and, and phone lines had went down, it wasn't a very large affected area. But there was some areas affected, so yeah, definitely communication is everything. As far as calls for service go for the last thirty days, we haven't had many, we've had twenty seven, we've taken six investigative reports, we've had two arrests out of those investigations. And the types of calls on the top of the list, we had two assaults, three were investigations surrounding child abuse, two disturbances, one call reporting garbage dumping, two calls reporting suspicious circumstances, two welfare checks, and two reported traffic collisions. And if you guys aren't aware of the traffic collisions that occurred, they're kind of on the higher end of the scale as far as collisions go, we had one that was a rollover on Port Road, and then a second was a crash on Main Street. I could tell you that the Port Road was not alcohol-related, but the one on Main Street was, and that one's currently under investigation, no arrest has been made there. So that's kind of, that summarizes the last thirty days. And I know we got the Fourth of July fireworks coming up this weekend, and the festivities on the, on the Point Arena side, there's the fireworks and the parade, and you'll probably see a good presence of law enforcement, not only the sheriff's office, but the California Highway Patrol, the Bureau of Land Management will be down there for the fireworks portion. So we'll be there in support of peaceful and safe fireworks show and parade, so. Anybody have any questions for me?
That was a great report, any questions for the sheriff's office? Well, JD, we're looking forward to seeing you and all the other agencies that you mentioned, and hopefully we'll have beautiful weather like we're having today on Sunday and Saturday night for the fireworks.
Yes.
Yep. All right, thanks a lot for being here, and I appreciate you taking the time to keep us informed.
All right, good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, council reports, item five, are there any city-related meetings to report on, Vice Mayor Berkey?
Well, Lieutenant Comer mentioned Fourth of July, which is actually our Second of July celebration, and we've been meeting weekly to, to plan the event, and I want to thank in advance our one hundred and six volunteers who will be helping to put on the fireworks show and the parade the following day. And if you haven't had a chance to volunteer, there's still some things that need to be filled, so feel free to contact me and let me know if you'd like to participate in the event. It gives you a free entrance to the show, a commemorative t-shirt, and a lot of fun. So also, our Ad Hoc Parks Committee has, has met this last couple of weeks and firmed up our grant proposal for Point Arena Downtown Park and also for the Arena Cove Park. So all that's gonna be done, and we're moving forward. And that's it.
Thank you. Excellent report. And thank you, Barbara, for all your hard work. We're, we're, the city and the community depends on, on a lot of volunteers, but especially you for all the work you do with PAMA and with these events, it's just, it's just amazing, so thank you from all of us.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, city-related meetings or council committees? How about Councilmember Wasserman?
Well, this isn't in regards to meetings, but I just wanted to add to the discussion about emergency communication and report that, well, at least two of us here have our, now have our ham radio licenses. And Paul and myself, I'm not sure if anybody else does, but we will hopefully very soon be available for such emergencies under the, under the direction of the FCC and emergency procedures.
That's great, I'm glad to hear both of you have that. I've had one for a number of years, I have to check the status of it to see if it's still active. Great, thank you, Richie. Anyone else before we move on? Paul, I'm not taking you to an auction because that, that's, that's a buy movement when you do that, so. Don't bid on that. All right, we're gonna move on to section six, privilege of the floor. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on tonight's agenda to address the city council, our policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes pursuant to the Brown Act, if the city council may not take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. With that, I will encourage folks to use the raise hand feature. I have one question, is it possible to ask the iPad user to unmute their mic and maybe state their name so city staff can correct that for the record? That's only if the iPad user is willing to do that, if not, we'll do our best if, if something comes up. So the, the virtual podium's open for privilege of the floor. I would like to recognize our esteemed community member, Jennifer Smallwood.
Well, I got esteemed, that's great.
You're awesome.
So this is Jennifer Smallwood. Two things, one is along the lines of what you were just talking about. Paul and I have been in conversation about getting a Mendocino Fire Safe Group going just for the city of Point Arena. I just went to the sort of, sort of orientation fire preparedness meeting down in La Lala on the weekend, and it was great, but it was really for people with a lot of land, like they keep talking about, you know, hundred-foot clearance and all that, and most of us don't have a hundred feet to clear, so. And with businesses and just, you know, the different varieties of property ownership and, and land in the city, I, I think it'd be really valuable for us to look at how to, how to put together a group just for Point Arena. And I know that sounds exclusive, and some people might balk at that, but it's really the Mendocino Fire Safe really is encouraging neighborhoods to start up groups, and so people that are not in the city limits are encouraged to, to get their own, you know, phone trees or chipping, whatever kind of stuff that they want to put together. Yeah, so we're, we're working on that, and stay tuned for a, sort of a community meeting to out, so we can talk about what it is we think some fire preparedness would be valuable for our city. So that's one thing, and the other thing is I have not kept up on this, and this is like not on anywhere on the agenda, but what is coastal seniors gonna do when the construction is happening? Where, where are they gonna be set up at? Or do they have, is there, are they gonna be going along, doing something?
Are you referring to the architectural project that we've been reporting on all year?
Yeah, I mean, I've heard, I've heard, I've heard a lot of it, but I just never, I never caught wind of, so when the construction is going on, where's everybody gonna be?
Well, that depends. One of the last things, if you remember, if you were at that meeting, we talked it'd be a staged construction, so it didn't impact the entire place at once because the sheriff's office has to be here, city hall has to be here. So I think that's a good point you bring up, Jennifer, is to make sure that we have that plan in place of how to take care of our seniors for food prep once this decides to go to a shovel-ready plan. Did we lose Jennifer? Are you still there? Somehow Jennifer muted.
I am still here.
Oh, okay. And did that answer your question, Jennifer?
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if there was a plan or, or what, yeah, just, yeah.
We're not at that stage yet, but that's a good point to make. If it's all right with you, Jennifer, I'd like to ask City Manager Paul Anderson to schedule an item update on next month's agenda regarding the Fire Safe program, and I'm hoping, Jennifer, that you'll be available to reach out and, and talk with Paul or actually give the report on that. I would like to keep all of us current on that if you're interested. That's not a decision, that's a recommendation to the city manager.
No, it's definitely something, we've, we've already, you know, we've talked back and forth, and it's something that, you know, it's, yeah, I don't want to fly by myself, definitely.
Well, it'd be.
It's a collaboration.
Yes, thank you, it would be good to talk about it, and I think the council would like to talk about it more, and we, we would all encourage you to help keep us informed, so thank you, Jennifer.
Okay.
Anyone else for privilege of the floor? Not seeing any, we're gonna give a few seconds, and Paul, I did read that the iPad is Bill Arana senior there, so if you wanna
Thank you.
update that for me, that'd be great. Okay, privilege of the floor is now closed, we will move on, and Paul, I want to confirm, I'm letting you, I know you're doing triple duty there tonight as we're giving staff train, are you keeping an eye on the participants to make?
I am, yes.
I'm only seeing the ones on the main screen, which is fine, and I did open the chat successfully, so I'm keeping an eye on that. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Folks, there's a A three, this is, uh, items that are usually enacted as once because they're considered routine items. So again, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar, if something needs to be polled after the motion is made and seconded or changed, we can discuss that before we go to a vote. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt item seven, the consent calendar.
I'll move.
All right, Vice Mayor Berkey makes the movement, and Councilmember Wasserman comes in with the tight second.
I actually didn't say anything, Mayor Ignacio, I think that was Anna, maybe?
That's perfect, so we'll change that, please, Paul, to Councilmember Dobbins makes the motion, and Councilmember Wasserman signifies with two fingers that he makes the second. Now, we have the motion in the second, is there any discussion or questions from the public on the consent calendar? Any changes? Not seeing any, we'll take a roll call vote from staff.
Yes, Councilmember Wasserman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Mayor Ignacio?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to item eight, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, we'll turn the discussion over to City Manager Paul Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the benefit of the audience, I would like to read part of the cover letter that I attached to the budget, and then we can look at a few numbers in there. So this document is the projected revenues that will be received by the city and the projected expenditures for conducting our day-to-day operations and providing capital expenditures for the period of July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The goal of developing this budget was to produce a balanced financial plan that retains current service levels and addresses capital needs for the residents. I believe that goal has been achieved. During the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, the city completed nearly two million dollars in infrastructure repairs and upgrades at the Arena Cove parking lot and on Mill and Center Streets. These were once-in-a-generation projects that have improved quality of life for residents and visitors. Figures used to review twenty-one, twenty-two revenues and expenditures do not include the last two weeks of the fiscal year and only include partial reimbursements for capital projects. Final reconciliation of the prior fiscal year will be presented no later than the August twenty-third city council meeting. I'm happy to report that the city of Point Arena is the beneficiary of a hundred and sixty-five thousand and eighty dollars in one-time unrestricted grant funding for the coming fiscal year. This funding arrives at an opportune time for needed repairs and replacement of capital equipment, vehicles, and infrastructure. Your city staff have made recommendations for expenditure of those funds to enhance and modernize core city services. More detail is provided further when we discuss. Revenues to the city are projected to increase in twenty-two, twenty-three with transient occupancy tax revenue now approaching nearly two hundred thousand dollars per year, by far the largest revenue generator for the city. Return a Harbor Fest will provide much-needed funding for the rehabilitation of Point Arena up here. These positive developments are tempered, however, by escalating prices and the potential for an economic recession that would negatively impact visitor-serving businesses. I want to appreciate, I want to express appreciation to the city council for their leadership, to all our employees for their ongoing efforts to provide high-quality public services, and to all our residents for their participation and efforts to improve the community. From there, I want to share my screen, and I will go through a couple of things, give me a moment. Okay, this is the proposed budget, a final budget will be at the city council meeting in August. Also present is our CPA Joe Arch, and he will be providing some background information if you need any, especially around capital expenditures, which is a little, can be a little bit confusing between the expenditure and the reimbursement. This is a graph generating the proposed operating budget, and a few highlights I'll make, you'll see that there has been an increase from the final budget in twenty-one, twenty-two to the proposed budget in twenty-two, twenty-three of general revenues, that includes the transient occupancy tax funding. The COPS funding, which funds the sheriff's department contract, has also increased over time, and that is something that we should discuss in the future. The sheriff's contract expires this year. Going further down, the gas tax revenues, I wanted to highlight, there was also an increase in revenues from the gas tax and R M R A, which is the road maintenance and rehabilitation account from the state, that's funding we get through the gas tax, the additional gas tax that was created by SB one, that is part of what funds our road projects. Further down, the, I want to highlight the pier, these are all revenues, so I want to highlight the pier's revenues are about average for what the pier generates, approximately forty thousand dollars, and we will talk more about that in a little bit because, as you know, that impacts the bottom line at the pier, and we generally expend money from the general fund. This year is a little bit different because we have been doing quite a bit of maintenance down at the pier. This graph will show you the taxes that we earn, the different types of taxes over the last five years. And so you can see, for example, the sales and use tax between nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one decreased pretty significantly, and that was a result of the pandemic. And you'll see that it has actually started to move back up somewhat, but certainly isn't at the level it was before. The transient occupancy tax, on the other hand, has increased dramatically over the last four years, as you can see, and now is the biggest revenue generator for us in the city. The difference between the twenty-twenty-one year and the twenty-two, twenty-three year is the addition of the wildflower. I want to note that the twenty-one, twenty-two estimate is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that does not include the final quarter of the fiscal year just ended, so there will still be more income placed into that account when the books are reconciled at the end, end of July. T O T operators have time until the end of July to report their earnings for this quarter. Property tax, you'll notice there was an increase last year that was apparently due to a lag in the amount of property tax given to the city based on pandemic and staffing levels. So you will see that the twenty-two, twenty-three is more accurate than the twenty-one, twenty-two. And then finally, the cannabis excise tax, this is bad news. For the last three years, the cannabis tax has been close to thirty thousand dollars a year. And that was all through the pandemic, there didn't appear to be any decrease in the amount of usage. However, the green room has closed, and so we expect no revenue in next year unless someone opens a business in town. So that's a decrease of about thirty-five thousand dollars to the general fund for the year. Good news is that there's been about a more than thirty-five thousand dollar increase in the transient occupancy tax. I'm gonna skip these, if anybody wants to look at the staff report, there is more information on sales tax. Some of the other fees that we receive are business license fees, we collect approximately fourteen thousand fees from Recology, PG&E, and Caltrans. I just want to note the maintenance contract with Caltrans is very outdated, I believe it's about twenty years old and should be renegotiated in the coming year because we certainly spend more than we receive maintaining the highway. And also the waste haulers franchise is set to expire in twenty twenty-five. Business license fees have fluctuated due to the pandemic, and it's not anticipated these fees will recover soon. For example, the license fee for the groom room loan was twenty-five hundred dollars, which won't accrue to the city coffers in fi, in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We will conduct an aggressive business licensing campaign at the beginning of the year as we've identified at least several distributors who come to town who aren't paying license fees while regularly servicing Point Arena. And a planning fees are charged on a cost recovery basis, this past year saw several CDP applications filed with the required fees for purchasing, for processing. Those fees are expected to be utilized in this coming fiscal year as the applications are processed. A reminder, BLM does have a maintenance contract with the Bureau of Land Management to maintain the parking lot and visitor kiosk, and also perform maintenance duties on the land, that's a contract is approximately six thousand dollars a year. And we will be putting in for the full amount this year and for next year. As I mentioned earlier, the sheriff's department contract is coming up for renewal in this coming year. It's currently worth a hundred thousand dollars, which is covered by the COPS program. And the recycling grants, the city receives five thousand dollars annually for the maintenance of the facility at Arena Cove. And in past years, the cost of the city has been about fifty percent higher than the grant. In this past fiscal year, the city was able to reduce the expense for the facility by roughly half due to some staff turnover and tighter control on the number of hours expended. I want to bring this item back in the future to discuss the recycling facility itself and possible changes. This is the expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. Their administration costs are relatively steady, you'll see the recycling costs have dropped dramatically. Everything else is pretty basic, the parks' costs have increased. Part of that is expenditures on engineering drawings for the downtown park to add a swing set and improve drainage. And then further down, you'll see wastewater operations costs and capital costs are virtually the same, and the reason for that is that our Virtually the same, and the reason for that is that our um, that is a very stable source of revenue for us. We receive sewer fees. Uh, twice a year that are charged on people's property tax bills, so that's a guaranteed source of income, and so the wastewater. Operation works within that funding and has worked below the amount that we actually incur. Uh, looking at the pier, uh, these numbers are a little skewed as far as uh, the estimated actuals in the green, uh, because they're. Arena Cove project. Uh, amounts are included in there, although we are moving that into a separate capital account. Uh, your repair and replacement costs um, at the pier are approximately forty thousand dollars this year, and we will talk about that shortly as well. This is where your money goes that, uh, we expend. Uh, currently, we spend about thirty percent of our. Income on salaries and wages, uh, another twelve percent on payroll taxes and benefits. Uh, twenty-eight percent on supplies and services, the city uh, contracts. Uh, professional services are twenty-one percent. That includes your city attorney, city engineer, city planner, and then administration costs are approximately ten percent. Uh, I'm gonna skip through these because it's. Too much. Uh, I know that, uh, the council doesn't like to go through all of the numbers I've given the highlights. If you would like to, I'm happy to. Uh, talking about the enterprise funds, uh, this is the pure enterprise fund. So this last year, we had some changes at the pier. Uh, we brought some new staff onboard and they've tightened up the operation and spent majority of time working on the. Uh, significant deferred maintenance that we had at the pier, particularly of the boat hoist, the product hoist and the floating dock. Uh, due to this enhanced focus, approximately forty percent of the costs at the pier were attributed to R and R repair and replacement and sixty percent to operations. In a normal year, it would be closer to a seventy-five to twenty-five split between operations and R and R. Uh, approximately twenty-four thousand dollars was expended uh, on maintenance. This included a replacement of the green shed garage door. A rental of a boom lift for hoist maintenance, uh, paving of the pure deck and the preparation of a lake stream bed maintenance agreement for maintenance of Arena Creek. Uh, the rest of the expenses were for tools, safety, supplies and paint. The R and R fund was placed in a negative position because there was no harbor fest fun year and fundraiser in the fiscal year, which is how we usually fund the R and R account. Want to note that the pier has reached its thirty-four, thirty-five-year lifespan. Uh, we are in the process of interacting with the Department of Boating and Waterways to obtain state funding. To repair and replace certain components of the pier, including the floating dock. This will likely be a multi-year endeavor. In the coming year, we also need a full engineering and technical study to fulfill the requirements of our state lands lease and also to determine the extent of rehabilitation needed. So that we can discuss with boating and waterways, uh, moving forward with that estimated cost of that overall study is approximately thirty thousand dollars. And on the operation side, uh, peer revenues were approximately forty-one thousand dollars. Expenses were approximately eighty-six thousand dollars for a net loss of forty-five thousand dollars, which in the past has been covered by the general fund. That is not an abnormal number, unfortunately. And the wastewater enterprise fund, um, we have begun an inflow and infiltration study of the wastewater system. To identify the repairs needed to qualify for funding from State Water Resources Control Board to upgrade the system. Uh, funding for the study is being reimbursed as per progress is made. Uh, we have some infrastructure needs at the wastewater plant, which are highlighted later as well. Uh, the most important being a backup generator, which we have funding for through a Cal O E S safety grant, uh, approximately ninety thousand dollars left. Your special projects manager is working diligently on uh, contracting and obtaining a generator, which will be brought before the city council, hopefully in the next couple of months. I am happy to report, we use part of that grant recently to purchase a portable generator. A portable three-phase generator for use at City Hall and the two lift stations. City staff is recommending an influent lagoon mixer at a rate of about twenty thousand dollars and affluent pump and piping upgrade, which is very important. They're currently spending uh, more time than needed to work on that. Uh, that's an approximately forty thousand dollar expenditure and then a replacement of the chlorine injection unit, which also is a time saver for staff. Uh, versus the way they currently do it. These are the funds for the uh, enterprise funds and where the money goes.
Well, let's pause for a moment and ask if staff has any, uh, I'm staff, uh, council has any question on what they've heard so far. Uh, I like your cadence that you have on this and it's very informative, but I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask questions if they arise. Please continue, Paul.
Sure. So, uh, this is just a review of your capital improvement program for roads and streets. Noting that the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three year, uh, there is the Wendy Hollow project, which we will be bringing back to the council for further discussion. So I'm just review some of the capital projects funding that we accomplished in the uh, twenty-one, twenty-two and the upcoming years. Uh, the first being the streets project that I just mentioned. We have approximately five hundred and fifty thousand through local partnership program with California Transportation Commission. Uh, twenty-five percent match on our side, which we will attain with funding from Mendocino Council of Governments. In the parks, we do have a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars available for uh. Improving park facilities with no match required. Uh, currently, we have split this between the downtown park and Arena Cove Park. Uh, you can ignore this B L M city trailhead for the moment. I kind of threw that in there and I didn't really vet that when I created the document. So basically, um, between. These two, uh, it's about ninety thousand dollars each. We did meet recently with Arena Cove stewards representatives to discuss the Arena Cove park and came up with some. Ideas for different things that we again will bring back to council. Uh, the backup power. Uh, so your C P O Joe Wilson's requested the installation of a backup generator, which is vital. Uh, this is a little background. We received a one-time grant of a hundred and fifty-three thousand from. California Office of Emergency Services, uh, which allows for a purchase and installation of the generator. Your project manager recently for research and acquired a mobile generator. The ability to charge City Hall Arena Cove and Cypress Meadows lift stations. Uh, and accounting of this currently is, uh, we took twenty-five thousand dollars of that grant, put it in a public safety reserve for future needs. We spent thirteen thousand dollars on an electrical analysis of backup power needs of the wastewater plant and lift station in advance of trying to find the correct generator. We purchased a mobile generator, as I mentioned, for twelve thousand dollars, and we've spent approximately five, we will spend approximately five thousand dollars on administrative staff time that is. Doing the work and recouping the money. So the estimated balance is approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars, which expires later this year. That's the amount of money we basically have to work with to find something for the wastewater plant, which I think is quite doable. Some of the other funded grant projects we have, uh, as I mentioned before, we have the wastewater treatment inflow and infiltration study. That's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Water Resources Control Board. No matches required. We have the local coastal program update that we, uh, approved, uh, the contract for a couple of meetings ago. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from housing and community development, uh, no match required. The veterans building and technical feasibility study that's ongoing is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to uh, assess the viability of the veterans building for future use. Again, not a match required. And the sea level rise, risk and vulnerability study, which I found out, uh, Friday, we have received the funding and will be moving forward. That's a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Coastal Commission. Again, no uh, match required. So we have quite a bit of money coming into the community to upgrade things, and I think that's a really positive development. I want to um. Commend your former city manager, Richard Shoemaker, did a phenomenal job of locating, finding, applying for and receiving this money. I can't take. Much credit for this. He, it is really, um, his work. So the thing I wanted to get to, uh, was I mentioned earlier about the um. Hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in unrestricted grant funding we received. Part of that funding came as a result of the American Rescue Plan, which was, uh, passed and signed into law last year at the beginning of the new administration. Uh, that funding provided every city in the country, uh, funding based on per capita population size. Our share wound up being a hundred and seven thousand dollars, which can be utilized for any public benefit. This was a split between you two years. We received. Half in twenty twenty-one or twenty-one, twenty-two, half in this upcoming fiscal year. And then we also have a safety grant from our former risk manager, Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority, uh, when. We always received an annual safety grant, so we use that for brush clearing, installation of cameras, things like that. Harsec merged with California Intergovernmental Risk Authority in twenty twenty-one. Uh, some changes were made. That annual grant was converted to a one-time grant that can be used for any public benefit, not just safety. So you have a total of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that you can utilize unrestricted, um. For the city, uh, that's actually about twenty percent of the annual budget. Um, I recommend using this for one-time repair and replacement of facilities and vehicles, not, uh, we could theoretically use it to pay. Uh, payroll taxes, payroll, uh, anything in the city, but I don't think it's a good idea to use one-time money to fund ongoing expenses. Uh, so staff and public works, pure wastewater and admin have provided a list of what they consider to be the most critical needs, uh, that will provide maximum benefit. And I want to briefly go through those. I won't spend too much time, but these are really important projects. Uh, so in public works, uh. A work truck replacement has been on the books for quite some time. As we know, the uh, old Dodge is way past its lifespan. Um, and so we're looking to find a more modern truck that can serve as the main work truck for the maintenance crew. I've estimated no more than a twenty thousand dollar expense. I think that is reasonable, although prices continue to increase. We basically need a trip, a pickup truck with some bed, um. Boxes. Also, there's a request for a zero-turn mower. Uh, our, our current mowing strategy is utilizing our tractor with blades on the back. Really inefficient way, uh, it works great on like big properties like City Hall and the rock wall. Does not work so great at the park and uh, smaller properties. So a zero-turn mower with a wow. Would make it easier for staff to uh, mow in restricted areas for sure, and so that's got an estimated cost of seventy-five hundred dollars. That might actually be a little high. Based on some of the costing I've done recently. So those are public works, um, requests, and I would say their needs, uh, those are very high needs, in my opinion, for the city. Uh, to Arena Cove and Pier, uh, one request is a boom truck. And the reason, uh, this is on there is that when, um. This year, when we started to work on the hoist again, we rented a boom lift because the way we had been doing it in the past was very inefficient and actually not completely safe. So we rented a boom lift, um, for two months, I believe. It allowed. Our peer staff to really get into the hoist and do the uh. Grindings and maintenance and paint of the um, hoist to keep it going. You know, there was a quite a lot of rust, unfortunately, in the hoist itself in the trolley and the mechanism that moves it across, um. If we're not maintaining it, it's going to deteriorate further than it already has. And so what we're doing right now is we're just trying to get it back to a. Uh, level that is acceptable for use, and then as we move forward, hopefully with funding from boating and waterways and other places, we'll be able to improve it. Uh, so to me, that's a really important thing for the pier because it allows staff to be able to. Get up to the hoist and do work, uh, safely and easily. The other thing is we, we can use that for other things like banner hanging downtown. If we need to get on the roof of the city hall or firehouse, it's just a, uh, a helpful item to have. There's also a request for replacement of a forklift, which is currently over twenty years old. Um, it is, has a lot of issues. We do have a lot of maintenance on that over time, uh, which adds up. An estimated cost for that would be about twenty thousand dollars for a used forklift. Um, I think that's something important to consider. If we had a newer forklift, we could keep the older forklift for backup if we needed it for busy times like during crab season. And then the pair restroom upgrades have been something that have been on the books since I started here many years ago. Um, they, as you know, what they look like and how they are, we want to replace the uh, framing. The doors and repair the broken window tiles inside. So based on this, a total request of approximately sixty thousand dollars for the Cove and Pier. And then moving on to wastewater's ideas, we, I mentioned earlier, the influent lagoon mixers are approximately twenty thousand dollars, the affluent pump and piping upgrade. Approximately forty thousand dollars. And that would replace unserviceable check valves and replace two pumps. And then a replacement of the chlorine injection unit, which is antiquated, not designed for the corrosive environment. Of this, of the air and breaks down as a result. That total request is approximately seventy thousand dollars. And then an administration, bless you, and an administration, um. Was looking at some money for city hall upgrades. As you know, when we take over this building, hopefully in the next couple of months, we want to, we've worked with the sheriff's department to expand our. Offices into part of where their offices were that they no longer need, uh, so that'll be a reconfiguration, probably adding a door and doing some framing and other things. Um, and then equipment to enable, uh, hybrid meetings. That we discussed at the last meeting and then twenty-five hundred dollars, which is the administrative expense for managing these two grants. So a grand total request, best case scenario of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, which is. A little bit, maybe a thousand, five hundred dollars higher than the grant amount we have. I do want, before I take any questions, um, or comments, I do want to say that, um. Given the deficit in the R and R account at the pier. Uh, I think it would be wise to utilize some of this grant funding to backfill the, um, expenses of. The paving, the boom lift, um. I'm forgetting what the other one is, sorry. Uh, the expenses that we have made, non-personnel expenses to repair the pier this year because we did not have any, um. Funding from Harbor Fest. In this coming year, we do will have Harbor Fest, hopefully very successful, and it will help. So I would suggest. Uh, utilizing twenty-five thousand dollars of the overall funding to pay for the work that we've already done on the pier this year. With that. That's all I have. So I am happy to entertain questions, concerns. Uh, Joe is here. Joe Arch, I don't know if he wants to weigh in right now or answer any questions you might have. So thank you.
A good report, Paul. I'd like to defer to council member Wasserman. Uh, you're muted, sir.
Thank you for that. Um, I just had a couple of questions, uh, about the boom truck. Firstly, um, is that a versatile, uh, vehicle that can be used for other purposes? Um, other than specifically the boom? And the second question is. Uh, housing for, uh, both the new trucks that are proposed, uh, someplace indoors where they might be protected from the weather. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Richie. Uh, Paul, you wanna update?
Yes, so, uh, with a boom, so we used a boom lift down there. We rented a lift and. We talked about it and a boom truck would be more versatile and would also be able, most boom trucks have side panels that can be used to store tools and such, so it would actually be a. Considered a work truck to a degree that would be able to be utilized, uh, you know, when it needs to be at the pier or for other things. So it would be a supplemental truck. Of course, it would have a large boom on it, so there wouldn't be much room in the back for storage, but there would be on the sides. Um, I think it would be a good move to, uh, have one of those for the city. Uh, as far as storage, um, the mayor and I are discussing with our supervisor, Ted Williams. A way to utilize the county yard, um. To store vehicles and materials, and that is our, that is our hope, that we can bring that back to the council for approval. Sometime in the next couple of months. I understand the concern. I have the concern about the flatbed being outside all the time and the way the weather's deteriorating, and so we need to find some storage. Inside and unfortunately, our storage is basically the firehouse, which is already full. So definitely share your concern and that's something I'm trying to work on moving forward to get more space for us.
Follow-up to Richie's comment, Paul. As far as sourcing, you know, you and I have been working on sources, working with the supervisor Ted Williams, uh, to look, to see if we can get in on the counties. Uh, secondary, um, uh. Vehicles. I mean, their secondary vehicles are maybe if they're lucky, ten years old, which is far newer than anything we currently operate. The Brent, uh, Blazer was here last week and he says that the sheriff's office still has a seizure program. That the city might be able to come in and, uh, take a pick, but there was no guarantees there. Uh, the other thing that came up during the. The other thing that came up during this conversation was Paul with a bucket truck or a boom truck like you're talking about. We should try to develop a relationship with PG&E and possibly AT&amp;T. They go through those vehicles quite frequently and I see them in secondhand yards that have clearly gone to auction, but out of goodwill, if we can get in there before some of their sur, not surplus, well, surplus equipment moves off to auction. We may have an opportunity there that would be mutually beneficial. That said, there is, we've utilized out at the casino before on the good graces of PG&E, you know, one-time instance that they can come in and help us, so keep that in the back of your mind too, the worst thing they could say is no. Any other questions to Paul on what we've heard about the budget thus far? How about Paul, you ready to take any questions from the public?
Of course.
If anybody out there in the public sector, including, is he here? There he is, Brian Sobolski from the ICO. Has any questions about this report that we've received, please use the raise hand feature, it would be called upon and we'd like to hear from you. Paul, that was an excellent report. Would you like, actually, you know what, let's have Jennifer Smallwood chime in here and, and let's hear what Jennifer has to say. Welcome back, good evening, Jennifer.
Hi, I have three things, one, I support wholeheartedly any updating, fixing up. Beautifying, unsmelling, unwinding, noisy, happening at the water treatment plant. I mean, I mean, obviously I live across the street from it, so I get like firsthand stuff, but whenever I go down there and talk to those guys, it's always like, yeah, if we could just get this thing fixed, if we could just update this. Well, we'll try to squirt some grease on it and see if we can fix it because we hate it too and you know, so yeah, anything we can do to help those guys out because they're, they're like using duct tape and rubber bands down there. Um, the, the next thing is about the truck, I don't really know all the vehicles that the city has, but as a former heavy equipment operator, I know that if I was running a tractor up and down the road as opposed to a truck. Pulling material up and down the road, the contractor I was working for had been kind of sad because that's just wearing out your tractor. If there's a way for the, a truck, us to have a truck that can take a, you know, a couple of bucket loads of asphalt or whatever those guys are hauling around. And then not have the tractor running back and forth up and down the city streets. It's just, it's not built for that. It's just not made to do that and you're just wearing your, your equipment up. So i- if you're gonna update your, your fleet, that might be something that you look at to try to double, double up on. And then also. We had, at, at our ranch, we had not a zero-turn lawnmower, but Kubota makes a, a small tractor, it's the size of a lawnmower. But you drive over the deck and you can put a fine deck on it or a, or one that you go out and field with. But this thing that's kind of nice about this Kubota mower is that it also has a three-point hitch on the back. So that if you have, if you want a chip, if you wanted to run. You know, if you want to haul a wagon, if you wanted to drill, you know, put a drill on the back of it, what else do we do? A bush hog.
PTO, right, the power takeoff module?
Right, it has, yeah, it has a three-point hitch at PTO and, and it's of a size that you know, probably you could do a lot with it and maybe not use the big tractor so much or you know, you have something else, somebody can run that who's maybe not as that not as trained or whatever, but yeah, that, that might be something you want to look at instead of just getting a mower.
Okay.
So Kubota makes it and I forget the number of it, but if, if you ask any Gratton or whoever. You know, and they'll tell you and it's, it's going to cost more than seven, it's going to be closer to maybe eight or nine. So, but it's, it's a much more versatile vehicle, you could take the deck off and use it to haul stuff, you know, put your little wagon behind and haul stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah. The mower and the, picks up the water treatment plant, yay. I'm happy for that.
Awesome.
Done.
You're done, awesome, thank you. All right, Paul, you got those notes from Jennifer?
Definitely.
For that. Anyone else like to chime in on this? Okay, Paul, are you looking for a motion?
I'm not really looking for a motion because this isn't the final adoption. I'm just getting a sense of where the council is regarding the additional money we have and I want to bring that back for final approval and I want to get an idea of how people feel about the suggestions that have been made or if there are other suggestions that people have for utilizing that funding.
So that funding, I don't think is an action item tonight, I'm, I'm thinking you're bringing it back in July, is that your intent?
It would be either July or August when we have the final budget.
Okay, Vice Mayor Berkey. You're muted, you're, I mean, Vice Mayor, you're muted.
Hi. Okay, thank you. The wastewater treatment plant portion of the funding that you've proposed is the most important to me. Not just because Jennifer Smallwood lives across the street and has to put up with it, but just that I've just heard so much about how everything is so ancient there and we can't afford to have it go out, it would just be a disaster. So I'm, I'm really behind doing the wastewater treatment plant portion of this funding. And also the restroom upgrades at the pier, let's just do it. It's been hanging on for decades, we've got to get it done. You know, our community deserves that, so anyway, that's my opinion.
So just to be fair, I, I would like to second what Vice Mayor Berkey has said. Wastewaters, I think are our first priority on getting funded, I like the idea of of getting the pier bathrooms, like you said, it's been a long time and then I know I'm a big. I, I want to get better on, on, on our public works and everything, but that pier hoist really is vital for operations down there, so I would back away a little bit on my my public works as though I support them very well and we're going to try and find some housing and equipment for them. But I think that's really important. I'd like to go to, actually Richie, you mind if I go to Billy real quick and then, all right, Billy Arana?
Hello, about the, the pier funds, it might be beneficial to allocate some funds for marketing the pier because it is essentially a business and there's lots of people who fish in Mendocino County and in kind of further inland. And a lot of those people don't know that Point Arena is such an option, it might end up being like a good idea to reach out, kind of put Point Arena's pier out there as if it was a business and kind of marketing it as a business to get more funds in, just in terms of launch and sales that way. Just to kind of offset some of those other expenses, it, it might not be worth it, but I feel like it's a good idea to look at it and think about it.
Since we're recently back with travel Mendocino, that might, there might be an option through there that we might be able to utilize on something that we already have earned credit on, so that's a good suggestion, Billy. I'm, I'm not, I'm sure you weren't referring to like advertising in Surf Magazine, right Billy?
No, I, I mean, that's not a, I think that market doesn't bring in so much money, but the fisherman market, there's a lot of people, a lot of money who like to go fishing and spending money in town and, and then paying for launch fees, so I think that's kind of the spot.
So like, like Billy says there, Paul, I think we might add an item in there and see what our resources are available and, and look at possibly dedicating some specific resources in time to get the word out.
And it's definitely something we've discussed internally at the pier, better marketing and explanation of, you know, support fishing's back and that we're a location for that.
Okay. Thank you, Billy, if you could check your raised hand unless you have more. We're going to go to Councilmember Wasserman and then we'll come back to Barbara, Richie.
Just to reiterate the importance of the hoist at the pier, not only for a large number of fishermen that are in need of, of using the hoist, but in case of bad weather to bring boats out of the water, I know in the past we've had problems with the hoist. In those kind of situations and it caused quite a lot of stress to the fleet in addition to to recreational users, also in emergency situations. On occasion, the the hoist is used by other agencies outside the city in launching and retrieving, so I think it's just essential that that hoist be kept in excellent condition.
Good point. We're going to go to Vice Mayor Berkey and then come around to Councilmember Dobbin, Vice Member.
Okay, I just wanted to quickly speak to Billy Arana's concerns about marketing the pier. And the Point Arena Merchants Association has a good relationship with Visit Mendocino and Point Arena itself is part of the Business Improvement District, so it seems like Point Arena Merchants Association could definitely help with that marketing, using our contacts at Visit Mendocino and you know, it, it's just something we could help with, so I want to put that out there and I'll bring it up at our next meeting.
Excellent idea, thank you for that. Councilmember Dobbin.
Well, mentioning that other agencies use the hoist for activities or emergencies and things like that, is there any possibility of looking into funding those agencies to help supplement the place at the pier?
Paul.
It's something to consider.
Yeah, that is a good idea and you know, we've been approached in the past by South Coast Fire to use the pier to launch jet skis and I know that there are also boats in the past that have been launched from there. That's something I can look into because that is a really good idea of getting funding from other agencies to use the hoist. You know, we did use to, just as an aside, have a pretty lucrative contract with Ocean Fresh in Fort Bragg when Urchin was a very good market and they, they paid us, I think nine thousand dollars a year to have exclusive use of the hoist when they were bringing Urchin in and that, that contract is no longer valid, there's not been much Urchin in many years, but that's definitely something we have done before.
Thank you for that. Good evening, Bill Arana. Confused with Billy Arana, if you can unmute your mic, good evening, Bill.
Yeah, as far as that advertising for the sport on the hoist there, you might want to jump on that because in July, the salmon season's closed north of Point Arena. So Albion and Fort Bragg, you might catch it. A dozen launches there if we have a bite happening here.
So I would encourage the public, that's a good, good point, Bill. There's a lot of people that are following our update pages at Point Arena in Gualala and that don't live in the area and they're avid fishermen. Even if council members took a moment, including myself, to advertise on Facebook. It, it seems to get the word out and working with PAMA to have an address, a website or something that we can get through Visit Mendocino to add to that, that could be something that can be achieved in a relatively short amount of time. Good comment, Bill.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
I would just say, I know myself, I don't have a lot of contact and experience in that community, if there are particular magazines, websites, email lists that we could utilize, appreciate, myself and Dominic down at the pier would appreciate knowing that because we'd be happy to push that info out.
So Bill, you still have your hand raised, before you go, do you have particular publications from your industry that you can share with us that we might want to look into? Does anything come off the top of your head?
Not really.
Yeah, I wasn't, if you, if you have something or and you know of anybody that, that gets a trade magazine, that would be helpful for us to consider, please get ahold of one of the council members or particularly Paul at City Hall. Thanks.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Dobbin.
Outdoor magazine.
Outdoor magazine.
That is a good one.
It used to be called Outdoor Life or is that a different one?
No, outdoor.
Outdoor. Was it outdoor or outside? All right.
Outdoor.
Outdoor, I'll take your word for it.
It's all about waters, it's mostly about water sport.
Outside is a, is a Denver publication that is kind of ritzy. That, that's not really where you want to go, my sister does some work for them sometimes. But I don't think Point Arena would be.
I can envision the logo, you're right.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you for that. Um, all right, it sounds like everybody wants to get the word out, that's, that's good and you know, tell a family member to, tell them to spread the word, that's amazing how that, how much that gets out too. Okay, Paul. Let me put it out there one more time, is anything, does, you know, Paul's given us his informational budget report and you've done very well at it. Is there anyone that would like to add to that from either the public or from the council? Before we move on. Paul, I commend you, you did an excellent job. All the details are in there and I appreciate you hitting the highlights you did and generating the discussion that you did, all important topics.
Thank you.
So you don't need any recommendations, we're, we're, I think we're, we're all well informed as it's the public, okay. We're going to move on to item nine, ordinances and resolution, nine A, resolution of the two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-two. Authorizing consolidation of city election with the November seventh, twenty twenty-two general election. For those of us that have been around, this is, this is regular news every two years, so Paul, take it away.
Yeah, this is a pro forma resolution requesting that the county administer our election in Point Arena, we are an all-ballot election city. Mail ballot, excuse me, election city, although we do have a polling location at the Veterans Hall for people up on Eureka Hill Road to come down, so it basically just requests that the county administer it, very pro forma. We actually really only expend about a thousand dollars per election with them if we have a race with contestants, if we don't, maybe a couple hundred dollars for printing costs. I just wanted to note that for the upcoming year, for this year. The can, the filing deadline for the November election is going to be from July, July eighteenth to August twelfth. And there are currently three seats on the council that will be up for election, those are the seats of Vice Mayor Berkey, Councilmember Dobbins and Councilmember Wasserman, so keep that in mind and I need a resolution approved so that I can send that to the registrar voters to get us in the mix.
Before we go to discussion, I've been entertaining a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-two authorizing consolidation of the city election with the November seventh, twenty twenty-two general election, is there anyone that would like to make that motion?
I'll do it.
Councilmember Dobbins with a second from Vice Mayor Berkey. Now, as far as discussion. You guys are sticking around, right, all three of you, you're going to be on the ballot. And anybody else that wants to come in there and challenge your seats, they're going to be on the ballot too, so. I look forward to continuing working with you at least for another two and a half years. And is there any other comments or questions about the motion that's on the table? Public included. Roll call.
Yes.
There you are.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Mayor Ignacio.
There was a pause for Barbara, I don't think it was a bandwagon. Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Second thoughts, Barbara?
No.
No, of course not. Okay, item ten, reports and action items, ten A, request for appraisal funding and letter of intent regarding eight twenty-five Port Road. Paul, do you want to introduce this and anybody else that wants to be involved? Mute, sir?
Yes, make a few comments about the request and we can go from there. So the, as you may know, the property at eight twenty-five Port Road, also known as the Boathouse, is currently being prepared for sale by its owner, Blake Juntz. Arena Cove stewards is. Uh, Arena Cove stewards is exploring the possibility of purchasing the property for public benefit with state and federal grant funding. Uh, at Mr. Jensen's invitation, Vice Mayor Berkey, myself, your city planner, Scott Perkins, and members of Arena Cove stewards recently toured the property inside and out. Uh, the Cove stewards are requesting the city councils jointly sign a letter of mutual interest between the city, Arena Cove stewards and Mr. Juntz regarding the property. Uh, such a letter expresses the intent of all parties to work together towards a common goal, that being the transfer of the building. Uh, letter is required to apply for grant funding from the state and federal governments. Uh, the grant application process also requires a certified appraisal by a state and certified appraiser. Uh, the Cove stewards propose utilizing the services of Chris Bell, who's conducted the appraisal for the purchase of the Mill Bend property in Wallahla. And has assisted several land trusts. Uh, Mr. Bell has requested an appraisal fee of seventy-five hundred dollars. The Arena Cove stewards have requested financial city, financial assistance from the city to fund that appraisal. Staff recommends a financial split between interested parties of Mr. Juntz, Arena Cove stewards and City Point Arena for twenty-five hundred dollars each. Uh, I believe there are members of the Arena Cove stewards in attendance. Uh, they can provide more information or uh any questions council may have. Thank you.
For that, Paul, great introduction. Is there someone here that would like to use the raise hand feature from. Uh, Rena Cove stewards like to introduce themselves, their role in the organization and uh give us a summary of of this topic. Kathleen, please help me with your last name. I don't want to munch it. If you can unmute your mic for me, please.
Uh, Kathleen Chacey.
Good evening, Kathleen Chacey, and and what's your role with uh Rena uh Cove Stewart?
So I I am one of eight board members um of Arena Cove stewards. And in my past life here on the coast, I have written several grants, the grants that actually funded the Mill Bend purchase. Of just under two million dollars. So at the. Um, at the community chat that Arena Cove stewards held a month ago. Um, where Paul and Barbara, Richie, a few others were in attendance, the boathouse came up because. The rumor mill had that it was going to go up for sale, so we asked the community if there was interest in having. Uh, the boathouse and community hands rather than it than it becoming um another private business of some sort. And it was a pretty um strong approval of going for it. There was a lot of different ideas that were put forth. And so in talking to Paul and Barbara, uh, we agreed that we wanted to get in and see it, so we did, uh, following that. Uh, looking at the building, it's old. I'm sure many of you have been inside of it, uh, but it has a lot of really wonderful potential um for the community, so. From my learnings of the Mill Bend process and going for a State of California funds or federal funds. Um, this is probably more like the coastal commission funds. Um, we need to show to the grantors. That we have skin in the game, the city of Point Arena, uh Blake Juntz, the owner. And the best way to do that from my experience with them is to uh partially share the funding of the appraisal. And have a letter of intent which doesn't bind anyone to purchase it. It says, we're all working for that effort. So that in a nutshell is sort of um kind of how we got to this point, so we've actually been on tour in the building several times. Um, it definitely does seem a lot, lot of work. It's a community war to get the hands on it through grant funding. We need some major grant funding to renovate it, to make it safe. So this is step one of many, many.
Okay, Kathleen, and are you prepared to take questions from the council that they have in?
I'm sure, and Billy is here too.
I see that. Uh, okay. Um, anyone from the council have questions before we we move through this or any questions up to this point? Um, Councilmember Dobbin.
I'm just curious, where would we find the money, the twenty-five hundred dollar uh. Uh, amount of money to, for this, for the, uh, our, our part of the appraisal. Uh, for the city, when, where would that come from in our city budget or or whatever, our allocations?
Likely that would probably be a T O T expense.
I would recommend uh out of the T O T A C fund, the money you set aside for um the pier is one of the uh. Beneficiaries of that.
Great, okay, good, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Wasson.
Yes, um, uh, I, I, a couple of previous speakers had mentioned that the. Building is in poor shape and that is is true, but I just wanted to emphasize um that. Its bones are very solid and in good condition. Um, in nineteen eighty-three, after the. The big wave, um, the front part of the building was washed out. Under the existing foundation at that time. Um. I owned the building at that time and uh dug down to bedrock. Uh, after the front part of the foundation had dropped. Group virtually dropped down and uh away from the building. Uh, that original foundation was eighteen inches thick, but was not poured all the way down to bedrock. I poured um. Poured it down to bedrock of the original eighteen inch thickness, including part of the side foundation, which was twelve inches thick. And um I can guarantee that that portion of the building is still intact and good for many, many. Maybe another century or two. Um, as to the wooden part of the building. I'm sure that there has been deterioration, but it was really well built with the best of materials. And is entirely restorable. Thank you.
I'm.
Anna.
Um, I just want to put in a a plug for the uh historical value of that building. And I think it would be a great addition for the uh community to have that in the community, in the hands of the community. As a historical building, because it's been part of our community for so long, for so many people in our community. And I think it would be a great addition to be in a a it a public use rather than a private use.
Okay, um, in this process, either Kathleen or City Manager Paul Anderson can respond to this. Uh, then I'll pitch it to Paul first and he can send it to whoever. Um, in this process, who would be the owners of the building if we, as a collaborative group, were successful? Would it be the city or would it be an entity known as X? Paul?
Well, I, that's a decision for the council and with the advice of your city attorney, I would think. Um, I. The city, you know, the, most of the property at the Cove is owned by the city. I mean, we own the parking lot, we own a Rico park, we own. The pier, we own the rock wall. This building is adjacent to the border of our uh ownership down there, and so. I think that's an open question. I can't give you an answer. It's something that we would explore further as we move down the line.
Before I go to City Attorney Jenny Chandler, does it seem reasonable that if it did become part of the city's inventory that. Occupants wouldn't necessarily have to uh pay the same taxes that the city's exempt from?
That I not sure of, but your city attorney might know more.
Okay, Jenny?
I I I wish I was a tax expert, but I'm not, but there there are good and bad things about the city owning this building. If the city owns this building, the city controls it, and that means they can control what activities happen in it. The downside of that is if it's not restored properly and there's some kind of a, you know, accident, the city would be on the hook. For potentially a book, a lawsuit. But I, you know, as a lawyer, I can tell you what the downside and the upside are. As a policy matter, city council members, you guys, this is, this is your call.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Jenny. So um Kathleen, do either you or anyone else in your group? If they want to use the raise hand feature, want to comment on the current part of the discussion?
Um, yes, it, the funding, successful funding from my point of view, from the state of California. Rest solely with what's the use of the property. So um as most of you probably already know, grants are tied to very specific uses. You know, for example, the sea level rise grant that wonderfully was just awarded to Point Arena was very specific funds. So right now, there aren't redevelopment funds in California, to my knowledge, and I believe Paul would agree to that. Um, the, I've tried to contact the Coast Guard to see if there's historical money. There may be a little bit there, but there's not going to be. You know, eight, six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars to purchase the building. It's being listed at nine ninety-five.
Whoa.
Yeah, um, uh, so you're, we are going to need to to fit in unless we get an angel donor. Coming out of the sky, which would be wonderful, that, you know, hands it to us or hands half of it to us, and we only raise halves. We would need to have a very specific fi- um, use for the building and youth education and um is one of the uses that we're kind of looking at. Um, and so based on that kind of ownership, it does seem like the city could own it. And maybe lease it, lease out the building to a nonprofit called, you know, Boathouse Foundation or something. If that happens, my take on the taxes is it becomes a nonprofit business and we're not collecting a lot of taxes on that. Um, but really, there's uh, we've just opened up the conversation with the State Coastal Conservancy. Um, because we really need more of a pulse from the community on the kind of uses that they're interested in. Um, certainly, there was a lot of really novel uses that would be totally fun. Um, with the hot tub for the surfers and kayakers, et cetera, but you're not going to get the state of California to give you taxpayer money to do that. So um, there's probably a broader use or a multiple, multiple use, um, and so we're just sort of. Uh, looking at having a maybe another community chat to try to understand from the community, the uses, explore that with potential funders. And at the same time, um, hopefully fund and have an appraisal for the real value of the building, which is. Uh, the highest amount we could actually um get a grant for would be the fair market appraisal, you know, not the asking price necessarily.
Understood. Um, council members. Just looking at this, I mean, we're, we're, even though it's T O T funds, it's still taxpayers' dollars that uh we have to spend responsibly. And, you know, our our limited income is as far as taxes and T O T is just to this area. Uh, I want to make sure that we're agreeing that we, I mean, we, we just got done with some other business recently in the past couple of years with this property. And I just, knowing what we've gone through, um, are we prepared to consider ownership as a city? And I like what Kathleen's suggesting that we get buy-in from the public on this. Um, uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm open to hearing more comments about that, uh, but at the same time. Uh, this is a, I'm, I'm behind what the city manager and and the parties involved are suggesting, the three-way split. I think that was, that was uh brilliant. Um, I'm a little concerned that if we decide to go nowhere, uh, then we've just spent between the um. The Arena Cove stewards and the city of Point Arena, five thousand dollars for an appraisal. So, you know, make your, make your decisions very, very uh thoughtfully while we go forward. Uh, City Attorney Jenny.
This is perhaps not a legal opinion, but what I would suggest is this is very simple, similar to bedding a horse. The money that you spend on bedding an animal to make sure that it's going to be serviceable for what you want it to do. Is very similar to an appraisal. Twenty-five hundred dollars might be the cheapest amount that you spend to decide whether or not this building is salvageable.
Right.
I I appreciate that. I'm just making sure we're transparent and everybody understands what the thought process is as we go through this, so thank you for that. Kathleen? Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, Kathleen, just once, uh, Vice Mayor Berkey did have her hand up earlier.
Kathleen, I'll defer to Kathleen. Go ahead, I'll go after.
Kathleen?
Oh, I just want to say that um the three-way split, um. Which Paul recommended on this, um, Arena Cove stewards doesn't really have the twenty-five hundred dollars, so I want to be very apparent. That I've asked the State Coastal Conservancy for that portion, so it would be. City of Point Arena, owner Blake Juntz and the uh State Coastal Conservancy. Cause that would, if they said yes to helping fund the appraisal. Um, then we know they have skin in the game, which is really the skin we need, but you know, Arena Cove stewards is in because we're all excited and, you know, uh, we're ready to roll. Um, uh, but we really need to know that the State Coastal Conservancy is behind us and um. I think we'll get a positive response. I'm actually not sure what Blake will say.
Right.
But we'll find out.
So Paul, is that how the letter's written in the packet is uh. Coastal Conservancy, I've.
Are you talking about the letter of intent?
Well, that's included in this package, right?
Yeah, I. I'm not entirely sure. Um, I would assume they would need to be, I I don't, I defer to Jenny.
Okay, all right.
My, my recollection of that is that at the time that the letter was written, it was a a split between the city and the coastal stewards. Uh, I don't think that, I don't remember that John was actually a participant. However, I I think, let's defer to Kathleen, since she sent the letter over to us.
So in the, in the report that's in the packet, we're deciding on Mr. Johnson's Arena Cove stewards and the city of Point Arena would contribute twenty-five hundred dollars each. And I am aware that the the uh Arena Cove stewards is still working on fundraising and I'm, I'm hoping you're gonna play your efforts this coming weekend. Because I think you would have a, a strong response if you uh, if you ask the right questions. But uh, just for legal matters, and we'll run this back by City Attorney. Based on what's in the agenda, are you okay with us making that change to the report as an amendment? Uh, that would replace the Coast stewards with the uh Conservancy?
I I think that it's premature. I think that that the Coast stewards need to work with the Coastal Conservancy. To be sure that they're willing to to fund that portion of it. Uh, but I think the letter is general enough that you could approve the letter if you so choose.
Okay.
And 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 amend it as necessary.
Kathleen, uh, did you want to follow up?
Yeah, well, the, let's, since I wrote the letter of mutual interest, at the time I wrote that, I didn't say who was going to pay the appraisal. I just said, step one is wean the appraisal. Um, step two is the stewards and city work together, et cetera. So um, I would agree with Jenny that um if we changing Paul's um agenda item to include the S C C. Is fine for an agenda item. We have started that um. Conversation, and if they were to say no, they're not interested, then I don't know where there's funding, so then I would pause on the whole thing. But I do not anticipate that. They are, uh, the three emails I received today were positive responses.
Okay, uh, City Attorney Chandler.
This is a non-binding letter. This is a letter of intent. It is not a letter that binds the city to a particular action. That's the only reason why Paul and I discussed it and and decided that it was appropriate to put it on the agenda. So it's not something that you are, even if you approve it, you're not bound to it if the funding does not appear.
Okay, uh, Richie?
Not to further complicate the matter, just a little bit of history. Um. Well, first off, I have to say that I am, as one council member, in favor of this contribution for an appraisal. Um, further than that, some years ago, um, the city was. Uh, interested in what is now the Rockwell property and the the park at Arena Cove. Um, and the owner at that time uh verbally gave his assent to. Selling the property to the city if we could get funding. We proceeded to get funding from both the Coastal Conservancy and Fish and Game without a letter of intent at that time. That's probably why they would like to see one now, but um. Without a letter of intent, the property was sold out from under us and we lost uh the, the two grants worth over eight hundred thousand dollars as a result. Eight hundred thousand dollars as a result. Um. My question, I suppose, coming from this is although we are not bound to a letter of intent to buy the property. Is the seller bound to not sell it to others during the period of time of the letter of intent?
Kathleen?
So I've explored that with the brokers, uh, with Blake's broker. And he is, uh, willing to talk to Blake about a, um. First battery refusal.
Yeah, the first refusal.
Yes. Um, and so if, uh, we go down this path, so one, the S E C is totally excited to help us. Cause that's where the money is. Two, we have a proposal that everybody likes, um, on the use of the property. Three, we get ourselves an account later for the appraiser. Um, then we probably could get them to give us the fir- first right of refusal. Um, I anticipate with the relationship right now of talking to, uh, Joe Rubin, who was the broker. That he'd let us know if somebody was sniffing around. Um, you know, at, looking at it, but we don't have a legal right, but we could try to get that first right of refusal.
Well, let's, uh, let's move on the action item that we have here before us, and that's for the appraisal, right? Um, is there any more discussions you had from, and Kathleen, you've been a world of information. I hope you'll come back and talk to us more in the future.
You can bet on it.
Is, uh, there anyone else from the public that has questions or comments about the topic? And before we talk about a motion, we'll hear from Vice Mayor Burton.
Uh, well, I feel from what I've gathered from the public, from our constituents. That there's strong support for the acquisition of the boathouse, that, um, this is a very popular. Um, item in, in discussion these days, and I feel really good about entering into an agreement to help with the. Um, appraisal.
So make a motion.
Okay, I'll move to approve the motion to fund the appraisal.
So there's a motion by Vice Mayor Berkey to, uh, um. To fund the appraisal and I believe enter into that three-way letter of agreement. Is that right, Barbara?
Yes.
Okay, and there's a second from, uh, council member Wasson. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions from the council before we move forward? Not seeing any. Is there any, uh, questions or comments on the motion from the public using the raised hand feature? Roll call vote, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, council member Wasserman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Mayor Ignacio.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, Kathleen, good job and, um, um, thank, thanks to you and Arena Cove stewards to, uh. For making this happen. Uh, I don't think we could do it without you, so thanks a lot. We look forward to talking to you in the future.
Fingers crossed. Thank you.
Alright, good work, folks. Um, we are at the seven thirty hour. Let's move on to item ten. Excuse me, item eleven, uh, city manager, city attorney and, you know, um, city attorney, do you have a report for us?
I do not. Life, life is relatively quiet. There, there are a couple of things on the fire with the wastewater treatment plant that. Will let you know about as we proceed. We got it, we got silvered, as we call it. We got a letter from Jack Silver saying that we were. In violation of the Clean Water Act. And so staff is responding to that and we will keep you apprised of, of how that goes.
Alright, thank you for staying on top of that. We look forward to a future report. Um, Paul Anderson, what have you got, sir?
Uh, well, that was one of the items I had, um, was this, uh, threatening letter that we received from River Watch regarding our. Um, wastewater treatment facility and by it supposed violations of, um, water levels. We're responding to that, uh, operator Wilson and I are sitting down tomorrow or Thursday to go through the letter comprehensively. And respond to it and we'll, uh, create a draft and give it to Jenny and we'll go from there. Um, let's see, fireworks, obviously, big thing coming up on, uh, Saturday and Sunday, the parade. I feel very confident about the success of the fireworks show. We have a phenomenal number of volunteers. Um, as always, and, uh, we have a good work crew on staff that are working together well to get the event. All the particulars of the event on our side taken care of. Uh, I do want to say the event opens, uh, at four P M. Uh, the gate opens at four P M. It lasts until the fireworks are over. There is parking available at the Rockwall lot until it's filled, uh, ten dollars per car. And then there is parking at city hall and at the high school. We'll providing, be providing two shuttles. Uh, M T A will be providing two shuttles, uh, between city hall, a high school downtown and the pier. Uh, ten dollar charge to park also gets you a, one adult ticket entry as well. And then, uh, the entry fees for anyone else in your party. Uh, it's always a fun event. Uh, we have quite a number of vendors and other, uh, well, bouncy houses and stuff for the kids to do. And so it's always a really fun event and I hope the weather is like it is today. Uh, the other issue was also the, what we've already talked about, uh, Mayor Ignacio and staff met with. Uh, Mendocino O E S to begin a relationship of working on disaster planning and communication. I do expect, uh, their, one of their communication people to come out to the city sometime in the next couple of weeks. And assess our current communication system and what we need to do to upgrade that because obviously a very important thing to have. And I believe that's all I have.
Upgrade something we don't have is not an upgrade.
We have walkie-talkies.
Oh, okay, you're right. I, I apologize. Um, no, it's, it's your staff, your staff, I, I look forward to being involved in more meetings like that. That was, that was a, a good come together moment and you realize, wow, we need to do some better planning. Thank you for that. Report any questions for the city manager or the city attorney? Not seeing any, uh, item twelve, future agenda items. We plan on meeting at the next. Uh, meeting point of, uh, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two at, uh, six P M. Um, you can also look forward in the next forty-five days, uh, downtown park improvement project coastal development permit. So with that, folks, I will accept a motion to adjourn on, uh, item thirteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Oh, okay, uh, doesn't require a second, doesn't require a vote. We are adjourned at seven thirty-seven P M. Good job, staff. Good job, public. Good job, council.
Thank you, Scott.
Good night, folks.
Night.